Dennis, we can't hear this on the 13th.
Well, good morning and welcome to City Hall. We'll get started with the invocation and our pledge of allegiance. Reverend Michael McKee is the Director of Student Ministries at Antioch Christians Church. He'll lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Gary Mars if he'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everyone please stand?
If you would join me, bow your heads. Thank you, Mayor. Father, we thank you so much for this time where we can come and put our minds to work in this city. God, we ask that as we look to the things and the decisions that need to be made, that you just move our hearts bent towards your will, that you allow all things to work for your good in this city and that the hearts and minds of the people are turned towards you. God, in all things, we know that it is your gospel that needs to be carried out. And, Father, any votes that we make that would benefit people's lives, Father, it's pointless if their hearts aren't turned to you. So, God, right now, we just ask that in all things, you are our focus, and it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call the meeting to order, and we start with item 3A. It's a resolution for Mayor's travel expenses to Washington, DC.
Second?
All in favor, cast your votes. Pass it unanimously. Move on to item 3B. This is to enter into executive session to discuss employment of the three positions employed by the council and mayor. That's the city manager, municipal councillor, and the city auditor. Motion to move to executive session at a later moment today? Not now. You have to try to cast your votes, and it passes unanimously. On to item four. It's the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item 4A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for November 1st, and item 4B is to receive, no, it's to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for October 25th. Comments or questions about the journal? All right, cast your votes. Pass unanimously. And on item five, this is request for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, I've got several. Let's let Mr. Groves come up, because I know there's an item that is already off for deferral on the item, and I believe he wants to modify that deferral date.
Yes, Mr. Box and I had tentatively agreed that we would have it heard on December 13th, but I'm informed that you will be having a workshop on the 13th. Mr. Box and I are agreed that we can hear it early in January, say, the second meeting in January. Would that be okay?
January 10th.
January 10th.
January 10th, yes.
All right.
Okay.
Which item is that?
Pardon?
Which item is that?
It is item 8, 8C.
All right.
Right, cell tower. Okay. Thank you very much, sir.
I have a few others, Mr. Mayor, on page 15, under item 8E1. Item B, 3015 Body Street, we ask that be stricken. Owner has repaired.
Can I make one correction? Actually, that's item 8B, 8C we withdrew, and so 8B is in Dr. Shadid's ward.
Okay, so item 8B moved to January 10th, and item 8C has been withdrawn. All right?
Back to page 15, under item 8E1C, 3010 Lucas, we ask that be stricken. The owner's repaired. And item E, 9215 South Santa Fe, we ask that be stricken. The owner has removed. On page 16, under item 8F1, H, 4208 Northwest 43rd, we ask that be stricken. The owner secured. And item J, 2432 Southwest 50th, we ask that be stricken. The owner has now secured. And also on page 18, under item 9A1A, claims for approval, we ask that that be stricken, again, 9A1A. It's the claim of Virginia Miller, and we're going to reevaluate the damages on that one, bring that back.
Any other requests for uncontested continuances? A recessed council meeting convenes the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. Okay, looks like there are five items. We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions on the MFA?
MFA 8.1, and this is a paving project, northwest 150th Portland Avenue to Meridian Avenue, and this is, will be very close to the ODOT's work along Portland Avenue approving Highway 74. Do we have any current information on what their schedule is?
Mr. Winter, Mr. Ryan is inquiring about the construction schedule on Highway 74. 74. 74, construction of the Portland Avenue area.
Probably underwater now anyway, so.
Now, now.
That's not, that's not, it's a question, but not the two items that are on for the MFA?
No, it isn't about the items on for MFA. It's do we know what the state's plans or what their schedule is for Highway 74?
Yeah, we've got the question in our office this morning. We're going to get a response to you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we're ready to vote on the MFA. All right, cast your votes. Pass unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC MFA, convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. There is one item. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions on the item listed into the PPA? All right, cast your votes. Pass unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC PPA, and we convene the council meeting with the consent docket. Okay, we have a motion and a second, and roughly 20 items on the consent docket this morning. Any individual considerations? Yeah, Larry? Larry, why don't you get us started with item I then?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. This item here calls for final plans and specifications to be advertised for projects at both Meadow Brook Park on Northwest 10th and Harrow Park over on Northwest 19th, and I'd just like to go on record thanking the Planning Department, Ben Davis, Kim Cooperhart, for their activity in coordinating this, and also to thank the citizens from the Windsor Area Neighborhood Development Group, and also the citizens and businesspeople along the Friends of Northwest 10th Street who worked on the plans for this and brought this forward, and then for the Neighborhood Conservation Committee for approving it. These represent some improvements in these local parks, which I think will shine a light in these areas and help in the renaissance of these two areas. Thank you, Your Honor.
Yeah, Meg?
I did have two quick things, 6F and 6J. And just to briefly mention, 6F, I just wanted to actually compliment the Development Services Department as well. They've applied for a grant for $10,000 from the ASPCA to help purchase hay during the drought season for horse owners that are facing short-term financial crisis and also horses that we've taken in to rescue. And so, we were actually awarded a $5,000 grant, and that will be extremely useful. And 6J was final acceptance of the PIA project, the Public Enquirer, and most of us had a chance to tour recently. And as I said earlier, I think it's just a fabulous, state-of-the-art facility of which we should all be really proud. So, thank you.
Thank you, Meg. Any other comments or questions on the consent docket? All right, cast your votes. Pass unanimously. On to the concurrence docket. Okay, we have a motion and a second. 26 items on the concurrence docket. Any items individually mentioned, or we're ready to vote? All right, cast your votes. Concurrence pass unanimously. That moves us on to item eight. These are items that require a separate vote. The first is a zoning case in Ward 7. The address is 337 West Wiltshire Boulevard. It's currently a C3 Community Commercial District, and it would become a new simplified plan unit development district. Skip?
Is there anyone here who represent the applicant, the owner? Mayor, I haven't received any objections in reference to this, so I would ask that we pass it.
Okay. Yes. We have the easement, all right. Sounds like we're good to go. Do we got a second?
Yes.
All right, cast your votes. Pass unanimously. On item 8B, that item has been deferred until January 10th. Item 8C has been withdrawn. Moves us on to item 8D, which is a slight modification to our retirement system. Any comments or questions here from council? Are we ready to go on this?
Renee Hyden is here this morning. She's going to give us a brief description of this ordinance. Renee is in charge of the Employee Retirement System?
Yes. I just wanted to let you know, these are all changes that are required by the Internal Revenue Code. These will help us maintain our qualified plan status and keep our plan qualified with the Internal Revenue Service. All these changes must be implemented by December 31st of this year. Any questions?
All right, cast your votes. Pass unanimously. Thank you. Item 8E is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8E? All right, how about a motion then?
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
I have, I do have one question. Charles, 8E12B was stricken. Tell me what the, I didn't put some reason why that was stricken.
8E B on.
E1B.
He actually repaired it. He's done quite a bit of work up there.
Actually, are there mobile homes? I was, I'm surprised there are mobile homes that are built that you could repair. I mean, looking at the condition of most of them, I'm surprised.
Well, all of them are mobile homes. Some of them were just the structures that are out there. There's regular structures out there.
That one's listed as a mobile home?
It.
Do I have pictures? It's listed as a mobile?
Yes, this is a mobile home, but what I'm saying, there's other structures out there. He's done quite a bit of work, so.
The manager and I recently met with some representatives from the Midwest, and the mayor, met with some representatives in Midwest City, and one of the things we talked about is trying to clean that area up. And so, I'm glad to see, I see another case on here where it appears they didn't. Is C one that we're going to remove, or did they fix it also?
And item C, that's been repaired also. 8E.
I'm amazed.
8D1C. Do I have pictures, Charles?
8D1C.
10B.
They said they were both cleared. The complaints were cleared by our inspector when we.
Okay, I'm just amazed.
There's some of them that need fixing, some of them that he hadn't. I mean, the ones that he either removed the mobile home or repaired them, we cleared, and the ones that weren't, we left on, and he'll have 30 more days in which to.
Okay. All right, ready to go on the dilapidated structures? All right, cast your votes. Pass unanimously. Round to item 8F. This is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8F? Sounds like we're good to go. We have a motion. How about a second? Cast your votes. Pass unanimously. Item 8G is a revocable permit with OKC Events and Entertainment to host the Devon Energy Corporation Boat Parade and Holiday Festival. This will be November 25th on the Oklahoma River. All right. Cast your votes. Pass unanimously. Item 8H is an updated hazard mitigation plan.
Thank you, Mayor. Frank Barnes is here this morning to give us an update, and he's got some friends with him.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm Frank Barnes, the Emergency Manager for the City of Oklahoma City. With me today is Sergeant Jason Knight, the Police Liaison to Emergency Management, Diane Abernathy, representing Scientific Applications International Corporation, the consultant on this project. Unfortunately, Major Tammy McKinney, the Fire Liaison to Emergency Management, was unable to be here this morning due to a family emergency. This is a presentation, which is an overview of the city's updated hazard mitigation plan and the updating process. Next slide. The earliest efforts to mandate hazard mitigation planning can be found in the National Flood Insurance Act of 1968. It called upon local governments to undertake community-based mitigation activities to lessen the flood risk. One of the programs created by the Stafford Act in 1988 was the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. When there is a presidential major disaster declaration, for every dollar that FEMA spends or provides in public and private disaster relief in this state, 15 cents is given to the state for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. The Hazard Mitigation Grant Program funds are used to fund a variety of hazard mitigation projects, ranging from planning to flood control to safe room rebate programs. The Stafford Act was amended in 2000 by the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000. The Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000 requires local jurisdictions to have a FEMA-approved and local jurisdiction-adopted hazard mitigation plan to be eligible for all types of hazard mitigation grant funds. The current Oklahoma City Hazard Mitigation Plan was approved by FEMA and adopted by the City Council in October of 2006. The Hazard Mitigation Plan must be revised and updated every five years to maintain eligibility for federal hazard mitigation funding. Next slide. Hazard mitigation is any sustained action taken to reduce or eliminate long-term risk to life and property from hazards and their effects. Put another way, it is a prolonged effort to reduce or eliminate the impact of natural and man-made hazards on people and property. Next slide. The purpose of mitigation planning is to, one, determine who is vulnerable or what parts of the city are vulnerable and from which hazards. Few of our hazards are site or area-specific. Therefore, most of our hazards, natural and man-made, can impact anyone in any part of our city. The second reason for planning is to be able to identify, prioritize, and implement mitigation actions that will reduce loss of life and property from hazard impacts and events. The third reason is to develop strong relationships between stakeholders. One benefit of the planning process is the development of relationships before the need arises. A fourth reason for mitigation planning is to establish mitigation action funding priorities. Knowing that there's a limited amount of hazard mitigation grant program funds and other hazard mitigation funding, it helps us establish priorities as to how that money will be spent. And lastly, it encourages active and inclusive public participation. The goal of the hazard mitigation planning process is to develop a sustained and disaster-resilient community. This is a community developed and/or redeveloped after disaster to minimize the human, environmental, and property losses and the social-economic disruption caused by disasters. A resilient community understands natural and man-made hazards and realizes the appropriate siting, design, and construction of the built environment are essential to advances in disaster prevention. Next slide. The mitigation planning process has four phases. In the first phase, we organize our resources, which includes obtaining grant funding to help pay for the planning process, engage the services of a consultant, establish a hazard mitigation planning team, and establish a hazard mitigation committee. The next phase is identifying hazards and assessing risks. This is commonly known as the hazard vulnerability analysis. It's the key to developing the hazard mitigation plan. You have to know what hazards you face or may impact your community before you can develop a plan of action. The third phase is developing a mitigation plan. The mitigation plan itself describes the mitigation strategy, the goals, and actions you will take to reduce or eliminate the impact of a hazard on people and property. And the fourth phase is the implementation and monitoring progress of that plan. Hazard mitigation is a sustained process. This is a five-year plan, so we're looking at five years of activity. An annual review of the plan, including recording or measuring any progress towards accomplishing the mitigation actions, will take place. Next slide. As we're doing the hazard mitigation plan update, there's two entities that are established. One of those is the planning team, and the other is the hazard mitigation committee. Establishing a planning team, which consisted of city staff and the contractor, who are responsible for organizing, coordinating, and documenting the comprehensive planning process. We also reestablished the Oklahoma City Hazard Mitigation Committee, which is comprised of city staff, local citizens, professionals, and stakeholders active in the community who provided input and feedback for the plan. They represented a cross-section of public and private interests. They worked together to identify and prioritize the hazards. They developed and prioritized goals and mitigation actions. They maintained a comprehensive, inclusive, and collaborative process that was in the best interest of the public. Next slide. What's new in the 2011 update? One of the first things is an updated and revised hazard identification and assessment, also known as the hazard vulnerability analysis. As part of the 2011 Hazard Mitigation Plan update, we conducted a hazard identification and assessment. This included conducting an online community survey as well as a hazard mitigation committee survey. There were 30 responses to the community survey and 27 responses from the hazard mitigation committee survey, for a total of 57 responses. The percentage of respondents who were extremely concerned or very concerned about a hazard determined whether or not the hazard was included in the plan and priority given to it. We then updated the hazard assessment and the description of the hazards to reflect hazard impacts and disasters over the last 10 years. Next slide. These are the natural hazards that were identified in the surveys as having the greatest concern to the community and are included in the plan. The first four natural hazards were of greatest concern to both groups of respondents and have historically had the greatest impact on our community. Next slide. These were the man-made hazards identified in the two surveys as having the greatest concern to the community. And one of the goals in the 2006 plan was to expand the hazard mitigation plan to include more man-made hazards, and we have more man-made hazards listed in this plan than we had in the previous plan. Next slide. Another new feature of the 2011 update is a clearly stated Oklahoma City Hazard Mitigation Strategy. The Hazard Mitigation Strategy describes the city's overall approach and desired outcome from hazard mitigation. This is the city's hazard mitigation strategy as written in the 2011 Updated Hazard Mitigation Plan. What's different is it's a clearly stated strategy. Previously, the strategy was included as part of an introductory section of a chapter, kind of got lost in the document. So, in this document, we pulled it out and gave it its own section so that it was clearly stated. There's several key points or elements I want to point out in this strategy. One of those is collaboration, where residents, stakeholders, city government personnel work together to develop the hazard mitigation plan and strategy. Another element is creating an educated and prepared community that is disaster-prepared, disaster-resilient, and able to respond efficiently and effectively to disasters that do occur. So, there's an emphasis on educating and preparing the community. Another element is reducing the loss of life and property damage from hazard impact. That's ultimately what we want to do. And following a comprehensive and inclusive planning process. Next slide. Also, what's new in the 2011 update is new Oklahoma City Hazard Mitigation Goals. These goals identify the specific goals to be obtained with hazard mitigation, which contribute to the achievement of the stated strategy. We revise the hazard mitigation goals. We replace the previous 81 goals with four goals that are aligned with the state's hazard mitigation plan. Next slide. Mitigation actions translate the strategies and goals into specific tasks to accomplish the city's mitigation goals and strategy. These are actions taken to minimize future vulnerability to hazards. For example, we have the goal to reduce loss of life and protect public health and safety. Can be translated into the following mitigation action that's specific for tornadoes. Encourage storm shelter and safe room construction or installation for existing homes through rebate programs closely, or programs possibly funded through the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program and other sources of funding that may become available. Next slide. We revise and updated the mitigation actions. 58 of the mitigation actions in the 2006 plan have been carried over into the 2011 plan, and these are ongoing or continuous and will likely carry over into each subsequent plan update that occurs. Some of the 2006 mitigation actions were consolidated in the 2011 plan. For example, we found in the 2006 plan, there were about four mitigation actions making reference to or regarding safe rooms and storm shelters. We thought this was redundant, so we combined all four of them into one mitigation action for the 2011 plan. Also, some of the 2006 actions that were carried over to the 2011 plan have been revised or rewritten to better reflect the current situation. A total of 80 mitigation actions for the 2011 plan compared to 85 for the 2006 plan. There was also a change in terminology. In the 2006 plan, they referred to the mitigation actions as mitigation measures, and in this plan, we're referring to them as mitigation actions. Next slide. Next, upon acceptance of the plan by the City Council and approval of the resolution, the plan will be submitted to the Oklahoma Department of Emergency Management for their review and approval. Once approved by OEM, the plan will be submitted to FEMA by OEM for FEMA's review and approval. Once approved by FEMA, the plan will be resubmitted to the City Council for formal adoption, which is required by federal regulations. Next slide. Once the plan is adopted, we'll maintain an active hazard mitigation committee. We will conduct an annual review of the plan and progress to achieve the mitigation actions. So essentially, the hazard mitigation committee meets annually to conduct the review of the plan and gather information on our efforts to achieve those 80 mitigation actions. We will document and implement the mitigation actions. And lastly, city departments will integrate the hazard mitigation plan. And lastly, city departments will integrate the hazard mitigation plan into their general city planning activities. So for example, as we're preparing to put together the new comprehensive plan, the mitigation actions, where appropriate or applicable, would be carried over and applied to that comprehensive plan. Next slide. Questions?
Yeah, Gary?
That last comment you made makes me wonder how the mitigation plan interacts with the new OKC plan or the current OKC plan. When you talk about flooding as one of the problems that we try to mitigate, and we've had discussions before on the horseshoe about developments that are allowed to occur with drainage control issues that are not kept up by the neighborhoods and so forth and causes flooding that it shouldn't have, how does the mitigation plan talk to that or does it talk to that? Or how does the mitigation plan reinforce to the OKC plan that maybe we shouldn't allow those or we need to make them stricter or something?
There is a, there are several mitigation actions relating to flooding in the plan, and one of those mitigations, actions is talking about not building, basically not building in the floodplain. And so how that carries over into the comprehensive plan is writing a comprehensive plan where you don't let people build in the floodplain. You don't let people build in places where it's likely to flood.
Your Honor?
Yeah.
I'll admit, I haven't read the whole plan yet. One of the mitigation things, you might put wheels on it next year to reduce the risk of back injury. But one thing I couldn't find in my rather quick perusal of your document, Frank, was anything dealing with evacuation?
Evacuation is not normally part of mitigation phase or the mitigation phase of emergency management. Usually, if we were doing an evacuation plan, we cover that in the preparedness phase and then, of course, the execution of the evacuation is in the response phase.
So we do have a plan to evacuate all parts of the city?
We have, what was developed several years ago was a regional mass evacuation plan. It's not, it's for the region and not just the city because of the common borders. And this was a joint effort of the Central Oklahoma Emergency Management Association in response to state legislation that mandated that every jurisdiction have a mass evacuation plan for their city.
In the near future, hopefully near future, we'll have a way to control signal lights from a central point. Has there been any thought to integrating that opportunity into your evacuation plans?
Once that becomes a reality, then we would incorporate it into the plan or consider how we can incorporate that into the plan.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Yeah, Larry, and then Ed.
Yeah, Frank, in the example you gave as far as tornadoes, you were talking about the emphasis on private storm shelters and safe rooms. I perused it in general of the plan and did not see any mention of what our strategy would be or what our thought is as far as developing public tornado shelters. Is that in there?
No, the reason that public storm shelters are not in there is it's reflecting a policy towards encouraging individual safe rooms. We believe that the greatest safety is achieved by individual safe rooms. If everyone had their own individual safe room, they would be able to use it and use it on short notice. So at 2:00 in the morning, when you hear the sirens or your all-hazard alert weather radio goes off, you don't have to go very far to get into that safe room. And that's the approach we want to encourage, is the development of individual safe rooms.
That was my question as well. You talked about incentives. Can you summarize federal, state, local incentives for individual safe rooms and maybe what's on the horizon?
Currently, most individual safe room rebate programs are funded through the hazard mitigation grant program. And right now, the state has about approximately, give or take, about $10 million in hazard mitigation grant program funds that have been received from a variety of disasters. That amount of money changes as we get new disasters and older disasters drop off out of that fund. But about $10 million. Right now, the state has almost $30 million in notices of intent and applications for that money for a variety of hazard mitigation projects. So we're competing for a very small pot of money. That money, each local jurisdiction has to apply for grant funding to run their own program. The state is currently running a state program, but they're going through the same process that I have to go through to get that money. The only difference is, is since they're the state, they don't have to submit it to themselves for review. So they save a step. But it's the same process. And so the state has a program going right now. Cleveland County is in the, Cleveland County has announced a program. And so our residents who live in Oklahoma City in Cleveland County can apply to that program as well as the state program. And we hope to be able to launch our program in about mid-December. And we wanted to, we had to get the infrastructure in place to support it, but we also wanted to let the state program run first so there would not be confusion between the two programs. And then we will launch our program. And so some residents in Oklahoma City, for example, those that live in Cleveland County, can apply Cleveland County, they can apply to the state, and they can apply to the city. But currently, our residents can apply to the state program. That program is still open, still taking applications. What's misleading about any of these programs is that the federal regulations or requirements is that we have to identify the location of where these safe rooms are going to be installed in the application before we even get the money. So we, every jurisdiction does this application process where people apply. You always get more applications and you've got money. So every jurisdiction is typically doing some kind of a lottery to narrow down the applicants to a manageable number. Most programs right now are targeting about 400 home, or, I'm sorry, 500 homes on average. So if you've got several thousand applications, you do a lottery, you narrow it down to 500 people, and those are the ones that would be included in the application. Then the application is submitted, it's reviewed and approved by the state, reviewed and approved by FEMA, and then if approved, we become eligible to get the grant money. Then they have to find the grant money that's available and match it up to our application. So it's possible to submit an application, get approved, and if there's not any money, they can match to it. And we have to wait till it becomes available. But the point of that long explanation is, is that when you have people apply for programs, they're just applying to kind of get things started. There's no money available. And it could be months and possibly even years before money's available after you apply.
What do you think of these earthquakes?
I'm from the West Coast. I've been through some pretty strong earthquakes, some pretty big ones. And I have to tell you that this was a different experience. When you can hear it before you feel it, that was a unique experience.
Any other comments or questions for Frank?
I heard somebody say last night that welcome to the new Oklahoma. When you have tornadoes, flooding, and earthquakes all in the same night, it's the new Oklahoma. I just want to say real quickly to give kudos to Frank and his staff out there for somebody that's been around emergency management for a long time. Our emergency management office and the activities, I don't think take a backseat to anybody because the one thing that we've done, we've got experience in a lot of these things, and we haven't just sit back and not utilize that. So you and your staff do a good job over there, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thanks, Frank. Well, we need a motion to accept the hazard mitigation plan. Cast your votes. Pass unanimously. Run to item 8I. I understand we do not need executive session on this item?
No.
Okay, cast your votes on 8I. Pass unanimously. Item 8J, understand we do need executive session?
Yes.
All right. Cast your votes on that. And item 8J moves to executive session. Item 8K, I understand we do need executive session?
Yes.
All right. Comments or questions on that? Move it to executive session. Passes unanimously. Item 8L, claims recommended for denial. Anyone signed up to speak? One person has signed up to speak. Is there anyone else who has an item before the council that might be listed under 8L? All right. I bet you're Larry Cotter.
I bet you I am.
Larry, we need your name and address repeated for the record, please.
My name is Larry Cotter, and I live at 6072 Northwest Expressway, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. I am the manager of Cedar Lake Estates. I'm also a resident. I'm also the vice president of the association. This is an 84-unit condominium, and the city came out on September the 7th and didn't ask, they told us they were going to change the water meter. And it was, this is not, if you're familiar with the little water meter like on a residence, it's this big, this thing. The water meter itself, two people can stand in it. They have to take the water meter out with the crane. It is that big. And they said that they denied this claim based on the fact that this was scale. We had had to turn the water meter off within the last year. I had a licensed plumber by the name of T.A. Miller that came out there. We had completely flushed the lines out. We had to do this before. When he come in and changed the meter, I knew what was going to happen. I had him to open three of the silo cocks. I asked him to open the fire hydrant. When they did, it come out rust and dirt. It was not scale. Scale didn't look like that. And when they dig down with that, change that water meter, they get water in there, they get, they get rust from that meter itself. It was completely wore out. It is not just scale, I can prove you that. I told them to be very careful in turning on the pressure because if you turn that pressure on on that big, huge meter, you can actually blow the shower heads off. When we turned in a bill, that was for the immediate bill that we had a licensed plumber come out there. It was $450. I can assure you, that didn't represent all of them. I personally went down and cleaned a bunch of aerators, and we still, we've had some people go out there and fix their own call to plumber. They didn't know what it was. I fully expect to be lawyer today, but I come down here because I represent a lot of people that are elderly, that are on fixed incomes. $450 is a sizable amount of money. That's really all I have to say. I think the city should pay that, and I thank you for listening to me.
All right, Larry, thanks. Let's see what information we can get from our staff.
Good morning. Amy Kronk, Municipal Counselor's Office. The information that we got from Utilities Customer Service was that a water meter had to be changed out. There was no indication of any debris having entered the line. The claimant's plumber's receipt stated that the plumber, when he cleared the lines, scale was what was found, not debris. So no indication of any negligence in making the repairs.
Okay, let's hear from Marcia then. Marcia, can you come up?
Hi, I'm Marcia Sauer. I'm the Utilities Director. So those people who were changing out the meter work for me. And those meters are a big production. They do require a crane, but we do that every day, all day long. It's a normal procedure for us. The procedure is to flush the line, to make certain that we keep any debris that might be around the meter from entering the customer's line. We did that. I'm not seeing a definition of negligence here. It sounds like we followed procedures and, in fact, where the customer had ideas, we were also following the instructions of the customer.
Is this unusual for this type of alleged damage to occur?
You would all see in the faucets, in your faucets, in the little screen on faucets, you'd all see a certain amount of what looks like red sand from time to time. That's a more typical outcome from this kind of event. When we flush the lines, almost every line that we flush gets a little burst of red water if it hasn't been opened in a long time because it, because it's not rust, actually it's chemicals from the water treatment process coat the valve that we're opening and closing. So there's a process. It appears we followed the process pretty exactly, and no, we would not have expected this.
Okay, thanks. Comments or questions from council on, from any of these three? Larry, tell me again what damage occurred and how you came up with the amount. You say you called out a plumber?
Yeah, we had to call out a plumber because we had all kinds of debris in the line. And I have to disagree because I had him open that fire hydrant, and they, I don't have any hundreds of gallons a minute that runs, but it flushed out brown and dirty, and then it cleared up, and then it flushed out brown and dirty again. And I have personally seen the debris that comes out of these aerators and out of the filler valves in the toilets, and it's got everything in it.
Yeah, did you, did, and what work did the plumber do specifically?
Previously?
Well, for the $450.
Well, no, that's a plumber that Cedar Lake hired to come out to clean these debris out of these aerators. We had people that their toilets wouldn't flush, they couldn't get water to vanities. It completely, all 84 units, I'm sure, had some damage, but they didn't all report it to me.
Okay, but what damage did the city cause?
What damage, what?
Did the city cause?
I think they come out there and didn't ask us. They told us they had to change that meter. It was old, it was rusty. I saw it. I was on premises. I was there with Patrick, the man that changed it. I saw the debris. There's no question in my mind, and I was a professional builder for 25 years.
Amy, if what Mr. Cotter says is correct, are we under some level of discretion about whether or not we want to pay this claim, or are there state statutes that we need to be aware of?
Case law says...
There's a, issue is really that there's not any evidence this the city was negligent in doing this. That's why we recommend it for denial. Unless you find some negligence on the behalf, on the part of the city in performing this work, the mere fact that it occurred is not negligence because their own plumber's report said it was scale was clean for the line. But unless you find some act of negligence by the city, you should turn, deny the claim.
I would also add that scale came buildup in the claimant's private line, which is their responsibility to maintain.
Okay. Well, is there a motion from council to pull this item and have it voted on separately, or do we want to keep it on the list of claims recommended for denial?
I just, Mike?
Yeah, sure.
Mr. Cotter, is the $450, that's for the plumber to come out and service, how many lines?
I couldn't tell you exactly. Probably half of them because I probably serviced 10 or 15 myself. And like I say, some of the residents may have not known what was going on, called their own plumbers. So I would guess at least half of them we had to go in and do some work on. And there are, there are measures that they can take, some screening, they can put pumps in that water meter to keep the water level down. The water level got plum over the top of the meter itself. As I say, I was there physically. I saw it.
So you had notice of the fact that the meter was being replaced, is that right?
I'm sorry?
You had noticed that they were going to replace the meter?
Yes, yes, they gave us notice. And of course, I met with Patrick, and he was very, very helpful. But I'm telling you that when you open that fire hydrant and the water gushes out of there with mud and sand and rust, probably 500 gallons, that's not normal. And there could have been provisions taken, I think, that prevented that.
So there wasn't any damage to any of the residents or their property?
Yes, there was.
Was it?
That's, the toilets wouldn't work. You turn on your vanity, lavatory's sinking, you got no water.
Okay. And so the plumber comes out just to service some of the apartments, is that right?
No, these are not apartments. These are condominiums. These are property, they own patio homes. That's kind of a sore spot for me. But we had to replace parts. These are the filler valves that set in the inside of the toilet tank that raises the level of the water when you flush it. And when those things get clogged up, and like I say, we fixed, you couldn't even stick a garden hose in it and blow this debris out of there. There's a difference to me between scale and debris, and this was literally debris.
So did the plumber say that whatever he had to replace was a direct cause of the replacing of the meter?
Yes, that's what the plumber told me. It's not a coincidence that you have 84 units have plumbing problems within an hour after they change the water meters.
Okay.
Gary? Well, I'm just going to say that any fire hydrant that has not been opened in a while is going to flush dirty water out, trust me. I mean, it's the normal sediment area, and it does it every time, and you'll see it every time they open a hydrant. Plus, when you're flowing the kind of water out, volume-wise, that opening a fire hydrant does, you're going to bring sediment out of the line that doesn't come out in normal day-to-day use of your faucets or your garden hoses or anything else. So just the fact that the fire hydrant was flowing out, you know, red water or whatever is not unusual at all. Happens every time a hydrant hadn't been opened in a while.
But that's precisely the reason that I asked him to turn on the water to flush the lines before it could get into our lines. And it happened, it surged two or three times.
Okay. Larry, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Motion from council to remove this item and have it voted on separately? All right, Larry, it looks like we're going to go ahead and leave it on, and I'm suspecting it's going to be denied. And you would then have opportunities to go across the street and file a claim for us at the, with the county or with us through the county. That would be your next appropriate statement if you want to carry this further. Okay?
It would be a, a small claims action. You would follow, they have the forms over in the court clerk's office where you can follow small claims action.
Okay. How about a motion then on this item, on the claims recommended for denial? Okay. We'll have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Pass unanimously. We're on to item nine, it's claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under nine A? Do we have a second? All right, cast your votes. These claims are approved. Moves us on to items from council. Pat, you wanna get us started this morning?
Nothing at all, thank you.
All right, Skip? Meg?
Uh, quickly, I just want to congratulate Georgie and her staff at, uh, the Neighborhood Alliance for their wonderful banquet last week. And I want to recognize Councilman Larry McAtee and his wife Joanne. They were recognized with a very nice award for the work they've done in their neighborhoods over the years. It was a great evening. Congratulations to all of the other winners.
And I didn't hear about this award, Larry. What, what award did you and Joanne receive?
Uh, it was an award that, uh, Neighborhood Alliance gives, the Board of Directors gives once a year. And Joanne and I were selected for our cooperative efforts in supporting the neighborhoods in Ward Three and the neighborhoods in Oklahoma City in general. So we're very appreciative to the Board of Directors and thank you for mentioning it, Meg. Neighborhood Alliance does a great job. And, uh, one of the neighbors in Ward Three also was nominated and selected as Neighbor of the Year, Don Hummer from Meridian Hills. So I'd like to recognize him for his outstanding civic efforts.
All right. Thanks, Larry. Congratulations. Pete? All right, Larry?
I'd like to thank the neighborhoods in Musgrave-Pennington for coming out to their neighborhood meeting, uh, and their angel last night. And, uh, they've got some good plans to move their neighborhood forward. They've been a very active neighborhood association over the years and we're looking at some great things from them. Uh, so kudos to, to Angel and her, her new officers at the Musgrave-Pennington. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right. Ed?
I would also recognize Larry. Larry's always, always been presented as a model, as someone who returns phone calls to the neighborhoods very promptly. He's been a model of how to represent neighborhoods. I, um, I appreciate the work of, uh, Clifton Adcock and, uh, Blackmire who've written on Project One Eighty. Both of them have articles in their respective papers this morning. I found them interesting. I, I guess one concern would be that, you know, it was only a week ago that we had a presentation on Project One Eighty here. And last night I went back and I, and I listened to it again. None of the concerns that were, that were brought up in any of these articles were mentioned in the presentation to council last week. Um, there was no mention of cost overruns. There was no mention of the reduced area that we're gonna be addressing. There was no talk about the budget shortfalls. I know we've talked at other council meetings about budget shortfalls, but the fact that we have lowered construction costs currently, that the protest by Mr., Mr. Dell served us about $10 million, uh, removing that area from Project One Eighty. Why, um, why we're just now considering refinancing, for example, the, the loan to Devon at, at the interest rate that we're paying? Uh, why, why we're waiting until we have budget shortfalls to consider refinancing? Um, why yet another study has, has come, has missed the mark markedly? The Arizona firm has, uh, come up, uh, there's a 50% shortfall in the sales tax generated. And, uh, next week we're gonna deal with the police headquarters again. That, that study came up markedly short and so there seems to be a, a commonality there. Um, no mention of the Mary Gardens being $4 million over budget. Um, and no, no mention of E.K. Gaylord being removed from Project One Eighty. And specifically the implications for the transit hub. And I just, Pete, Pete mentioned that in the, in the article today. Uh, it clearly had, was the lowest priority. Kathy O'Connor said we had a set of priorities that we're all first to accomplish and that's what we've really been focused on. Gaylord was not on that list. Um, I just, I, I'm concerned about the transit hub. I, I think that it, it has had the potential to be one of the greatest parts of MAPS Three with the most broad reaching implications. I'm just, I'm not sure that it's gonna work, frankly. If you, if you look at the big picture, this is what, what some people dream of Oklahoma City having one day in terms of commuter rail, having lines from Edmund to Norman, from the transit hub out to Tinker Air Force Base and, uh, out to the airport, out to Yukon. How do I advance that? Boyd, can you advance that? Okay. So, so the Santa Fe, we, we selected the Santa Fe site, um, across from the Cox Convention, current Cox Convention Center. And to make this work, it requires, I mean, one of the reasons it was selected is this yellow line which connects that hub to the pink line, which is the adventure line going out to the Omniplex and out into Ward Seven. And then the light blue line that goes out to Midwest City and the Tinker Air Force Base. But what I'm just now figuring out is that 30 years ago, Union Pacific, uh, had a lease purchase arrangement for multiple rail lines throughout the state. And the die was cast then that they would make payments over 30 years. The last payment will be this month. So this month, ownership of that yellow segment will go to Union Pacific. And there's really nothing the city can do about it. There's nothing we could have done about it a year or two, three years ago. Uh, and so I guess I'm curious, when, when we put this in MAPS Three, when we selected the Santa Fe site, um, can you go to the next slide? Um, it seems like a critical component of picking that site would be its connection to that yellow line. And now we don't have, we don't own that yellow line. And can we get that yellow line? I think that's an important, uh, piece to the puzzle. Can you go to the next? There are other, there are other concerns. If you, we, we approved an intermodal hub study. We approved, part of the, what the council voted on was that we would secure all the right of ways to make this possible. We would, we would do everything possible to get this started. The, the study advocated for three platforms. To make, to put the transit hub there, you've got to narrow Gaylord. There's not enough room to put the transit hub there as it stands. So to eliminate Gaylord from the Project One Eighty is significant. And now we've put, now we're gambling that we're going to get federal funds through the Tiger Grant. Uh, we lost that gamble before on the Skydance Bridge and we didn't get those funds, so we had to scale it back. I'm not sure those federal funds will be there in the future. I'm not, so it, it has implications to whether this is really feasible. Third, if you're gonna, if you're gonna have three tracks, you've got, there's questions about what this bridge is gonna be like over the new boulevard. That new boulevard, I understand, would have to be subgrade, uh, to make this work. But my understanding is that plans are currently to have it at grade. I guess, I'm just looking for, you know, to, for us to be proactive and, and look for the things that are coming at us to make sure that this really is feasible before we, you know, we've set aside 10 million. It looks like much more will be required. Can you go to the next slide? And there's much, there's, there's bigger questions. This is right, this is up north on the, they're gonna redo Broadway Extension here. Uh, this is on 50th Street. You have to redo this bridge. Uh, to make rail, to make this whole commuter rail idea work, you have to have two tracks, one for freight, one for commuters. But this new bridge that they're gonna take down and build a new bridge as they redo the highway, will only have room for one line. And then BNSF, BNSF is talking about doing another line to the right of this current line. It's not clear that BNSF wants commuter, uh, uh, lines going on these two tracks because they have enough freight. And so I'm just, you know, asking us to be proactive, meet with ODOT. I think that there are other, as this goes further north and crosses I-44, there, there are other big problems for the feasibility. Are we doing this or not? I guess is, is really the question. I know we gotta wait for ACOG and the alternatives analysis, but let's be proactive and find out all of the, the stumbling blocks. And if this is not proactive, then let's just, let's improve our bus line and, and do the best we can. But, um, I, I guess those are my concerns. Thanks.
Mayor, could I respond to a couple, a couple things that are out there? Uh, first of all, the project, uh, let's start with Project One Eighty. Um, there are some overruns through the project. It's, it's a large program that's out there. We do still believe that, that there's a, a chance Gaylord will be in one of the out-year projects on it. There's cash flow issues and we, those aren't new. We always knew there would be cash flow issues on Project Eighty, One Eighty. And let me explain. Project One Eighty doesn't, is a TIF. And TIF is the tax dollars that come in over the years primarily. We'll get to the sales tax in a minute. But on the property tax, there is no property tax on Devon Building as of yet or substantial. And when the prop, the building is done and occupied and it's assessed, there will be a cash flow that will accommodate that. To make Project One Eighty, to get the improvements done prior to the Devon Building opening up, Devon lent us some money to do the projects that we've been doing downtown Oklahoma City. That combined with some Geo Bond monies that we have, both for the Mary Gardens and for some street skate projects in downtown Oklahoma City, is how we've gotten this done at this point. We borrowed 95 million, 85 million? Some, uh, piece of, of money from Devon to accommodate.
At what interest rate?
Five percent. I think it was five.
Five percent. And the reason Devon did that, because it wasn't marketable. We didn't have anywhere to get that money. You couldn't go to a bank and, and do this over, over a building that may be assessed at some point in time. Now, because interest rates are low and the fact that the building will be assessed and there will be a flow of money to do that, it now becomes a marketable instrument out there. And we can go sell bonds on it because there will be an assessment on it and Devon will be, be paying property taxes on it. So now is the time we can do this. It doesn't have anything to do with anything else that's going on. It's because, one, it's, it's smart to do it now and interest rates are low. And now we can physically do it because the building's at the stage of completion where it will be now becoming occupied and that, that there will be an assessed property. So now is the first time we could do it because it wasn't bankable until that point in time. As a part of the project, we had a sales tax TIF that was put in. Sales tax, uh, TIFs of this type include both state and local sales taxes that were, that were put into it. We were provided by Devon estimates of what those sales tax dollars were to be. Because of how their bids came in and such, those are running short at this point in time. So that's one, that's the major reason we have a shortfall. We didn't put those numbers together. They provide that to us changing economic times. There's a lot of, of assumptions you make as we go forward. We're doing all this not knowing what the assessed value of that building's gonna be. And so we're going forward and that, so there's a lot of variables that, that take place. When we get to Gaylord, I'm confident that we're gonna redo Gaylord. I don't know exactly how we're gonna do that right now, but there's a lot of options that are out there. There's, there's a potential Tiger Grant. Odds of that, I don't know if we'll get that or not, but we, we, it certainly is, is a very strong candidate based upon the criteria of the Tiger. Multi-moral, it, it just, it, it falls right within the categories. But if we don't, we still think it's a potential out-year project for One Eighty. Not a guarantee at this point in time, but we think there's an out-year project of a Project One Eighty. There's potential, um, MAPS, uh, three dollars. If, if, with the 10 million that was put in for the hub, potentially that could be used for it. Don't know that, I'm not saying that. That isn't my decision. That would be a decision made, made by the, uh, this council as recommended by, by the, the MAPS three oversight board. Potentially some, some unlisted street projects could be used. Depending upon the scope of what you do on Gaylord, that could, could be done at some point in the future too. I think we all acknowledge that going from downtown to Bricktown and getting over Gaylord i- i- is not pedestrian friendly. It's, it's, it's a tough walk. I think we all know that and would like to do something to fix that as, as we go forward. Um, most of, and I want to switch, switch the subject here because you covered a lot. Uh, uh, almost every corridor that we're looking at is owned by a railroad. And, and the UP thing's been, 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 uh, it was struck, I believe, 30 years ago. Maybe it was 20, but it, it, it was, it was a while back. If we're running commuters, a light rail line up to Edmund, down to Norman, we gotta work with, with Burnout to Northern to make that happen. That's nothing we can do on our own, you know? And we run out to Midwest City, we're gonna have to work with Union Pacific. Almost any corridor we look at, we're gonna have to work with the railroads to, to make those happen. Looking at, at 50th and 63rd and widening those projects, it was, I think that, that merits some, some, looking at that. I know, did, uh, were you in the meeting with Pete and, and ODOT last week? And I haven't really been briefed on how that happened, but I know there were some discussions on that. I think that's a good idea and, and that's worth pursuing and, and going forward and taking a look at. Is there something, something we can do at this point in time while they're being reconstructed? And I don't know if I know the answer to that today, but I think that's a good issue worth pursuing. And I didn't cover all your, but I covered some of it.
Well, I just appreciate the, the, all that, all that discussion. And I think that's what the public needs to hear. That's the conversation that we, I just, I think last week it was, it was very kind of vanilla. We talked about the Mary Gardens opening. We didn't talk about any of these issues and I appreciate you addressing that.
Yeah, last week, you know, it, it, it was Shannon. Shannon, it, it was really just to show the progress that we made on, on, on the construction. It was not in depth. All those issues will be coming back to the council. There is, we have recently, uh, done a couple of things on, on, on the financing for One Eighty that, that are significant events now. We've got, uh, we're, we're about to close our projects, one, the street skate projects, one, two, and three, and the five projects on the Mary Gardens, getting the change orders done. So we're gonna know where we're at, at that point in time. Plus, we've recently just awarded a street skate, uh, project four. That's the one that's now, um, Dylan Robinson and, and Hudson out here. And we have taken bids. I don't even know if we've awarded project five yet. Eric, have we? We're taking the bids that came in great for us, coming up to council next week or two. So we haven't even awarded that. But we know the price, construction price at this point in time. And so all of that stuff, having a better projection of what the interest rates might be on long-term debt and having better cost estimates on the sales tax dollars that are coming in are all moving things right now. But each month goes on, we're getting closer to having more and more knowns on what those costs are. And we'll be providing an update to council once we've got a few, a few more of those known costs tied down.
I might also be able to provide some background on the MAPS Three as far as the rail component and the projected lines that you mentioned. When we were putting the MAPS Three proposal together in the summer of '09, we knew we wanted to do the downtown streetcar component of the fixed guideway study. At that time, there was also discussion with ODOT about interest in creating that line that goes to Tinker and perhaps the Adventure District line. All those are really on the table. We didn't feel like the city of Oklahoma City should be the sole funder for such a line, but we thought in the future Midwest City or Dell City or the county or the state might want to be involved. And we might be asked to put some funding into it. And so we inserted language into the MAPS Three resolution that would allow a future council the option of using MAPS Three dollars to help fund those routes if they foresaw it as a good idea at the time. All we were really trying to do in, in the summer of '09 was create options for a future council concerning those lines where MAPS Three dollars could work if it seemed like a good idea later. We really didn't have enough information or a cost to know what we were getting into at that time. We just tried to create options for ourselves.
And that's part of the hundred, that's part of the streetcar budget?
Yeah, it's part, it's part of the, the whole budget. So in the future, a MAPS Three Subcommittee and the Advisory Board and the council could look at that and say, you know, we ought to take some of those MAPS Three dollars and use it to open up that line. Because it seems like, now that we know a cost, it, it seems like a good investment for the city. But until we know a cost, you really don't, you really don't have any opportunity to know whether or not it's worthwhile or not. Uh, Gary? So you manage your ports?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, we're gonna do the, the housing, uh, downtown housing study presentation this morning. And this is the one that we had scheduled actually about a month ago, several weeks ago anyway. And council ran long and we weren't able to get to it. So I think Russell is going to introduce our speaker, Ian Colgan.
Ian Colgan, yes. My pleasure to introduce Ian. Ian is with Development Concepts, Inc., out of Indianapolis, and he has been working on this project for quite some time now, longer than he anticipated. But we're happy with the results. We've taken a different focus on this. I think the original housing study we did was almost a decade ago now, so the reason we liked DCI when we chose them to help us out with this is that they have not only the market analysis experience, but the real estate development experience. So they take us from the concept through to implementation, and our experience of what we've seen of DCI's work in other communities is that those communities are quite happy with the results that they have implemented as a result of their experience from start to finish. So with that, I'll leave it to Ian. He explained how we got to that point. Thank you.
Thank you, Russell. Good morning. It's a pleasure to be here for my second attempt to present this study. The housing strategies and implementation plan for downtown, as Russell mentioned, is a little different from previous studies that have been labeled housing studies in the past. A lot of those have sought to quantify projected absorption of downtown units, but this one goes beyond that, tries to dial down into more specific demand for types of units and demographics. But also goes and identifies hurdles to development, because clearly in the past, since the projected absorption of the past decade missed its mark, really takes a market-based and real estate development approach to understanding what needs to be done to implement a comprehensive and effective downtown housing program in Oklahoma City. The study builds on a number of consultant pieces, reports that are done for downtown, whether it's Cordish Shore or other reports, that basically say how important downtown housing is for overall revitalization of downtown, for economic development efforts, and other things necessary to realize a successful and impactful downtown environment for Oklahoma City. So the approach we took first was an existing conditions analysis, and this is both market and physical analysis, taking some, understanding what has been done in the past, establishing where we are today in 2011. Important in this condition analysis was understanding where the economy has been to the best extent possible, considering the recession and its lingering effects are one of the largest hurdles we see in terms of developing housing across the country, let alone in your community. Once we developed a firm understanding of both market and physical opportunities and hurdles, we translate that into the development framework phase. That's taking some more planning and urban design principles and understanding how housing can be focused in certain areas in downtown for its greatest impact. Some of the material you've been handed out has the study areas where we're given. We're given five primary study areas, including Midtown, Automobile Alley, Bricktown, the Arts District, and a section of Cordish Shore. So those are the areas that the development framework focused on. Then came the implementation plan. That's where the rubber really hit the road in terms of trying to understand how we can move forward from where you are today, and that's probably going to be the bulk of what I'll talk to you about this morning. Going back to the market findings, we used, complemented some of the quantitative analysis that was used previously, and we updated some of that based on population and employment changes over the years since the '05 and '07 studies. But we also conducted a survey of the metropolitan area done by a subconsultant of ours, gentlemen McCarty, I have at Indianapolis. And they, that survey revealed a lot of interesting factors. One was that downtown Oklahoma City is more, one of the most consistently used and recognized districts of a city as compared to other metropolitan areas. Now, gentlemen McCarty, as professional surveyors, have surveyed over fifty metropolitan areas in the country and were able to benchmark some other results from their survey here with those other ones. So we found that of the metro area respondents, they had a clear recognition, understanding, and desire to engage with downtown Oklahoma City on a regular basis. One of the other interesting findings is that when asked who was likely, or most likely, more likely to move to the downtown area in the future, twenty-six percent of respondents said they were likely or very likely to move as compared to nineteen percent from other cities on a general standing. So, you know, right from the get-go, we kind of see some opportunity to capture metro area market into the downtown area if there's a sufficient supply to meet that demand. Overall, there are strong lease rates and occupancy for the rental market in downtown. It's about ninety-six percent occupancy and lease, well, lease rates or, you know, the rental rates per square foot are the highest in the market. Those combined suggest that there's a high demand for downtown housing, especially rental housing, compared to other rental units, and that's another strong component of downtown housing that we can build off of. Sorry, this is a little different from my copy. As you may have noticed from the previous housing studies in 2005 and 2007, there's a significant amount of absorption projected, several thousand units, both for for sale and rental housing. That was not meant, there's about eight hundred units built between 2006 and 2011. But that doesn't mean that those studies were necessarily wrong in their assertion that there's a significant amount of demand. As previously stated, we, the survey showed a higher-than-normal interest in downtown housing, and the occupancy and lease rates are extremely high for downtown. That indicates there may be latent demand that we haven't yet seen that may manifest itself moving forward in the next half-decade to decade. Overall, the projections for rental housing are very high in the, around the country. The for-sale housing is seen as kind of a down market right now, so a focus on rental housing moving forward in the future is going to be an important factor in considering the implementation plan discussed. So through the existing conditions analysis, we sought to assess hurdles, both market and physical hurdles that prevent the realization of a downtown housing program that has been planned for in many different studies throughout the past decade and beyond. Key hurdles that we've identified is that there's a perception that downtown is too expensive. We showed that the lease rates, so for example, for one-bedroom apartments, it's about a dollar twenty-two a square foot to rent a one-bedroom apartment downtown as opposed to about eighty cents or below for the rest of the market. That isn't necessarily atypical of downtown product versus non-downtown product, but from a metro-wide area and trying to capture people into downtown housing, there's a cost gap there, and there needs to be kind of a change in perception in terms of downtown being too expensive, and we tried to address that in our strategies. Land costs from the development standpoint, there's been a fair amount of speculation and purchase of land, and that has risen, and that's a considerable hurdle in terms of development, that tends to skew the ability to develop cost-effectively. Deteriorating infrastructure in some areas, especially Midtown, which has seen a lot of disinvestment in the past few years, crumbling sidewalks, alleys, that kind of thing, you know, if seen as a private sector need to fix and address, that's a significant hurdle. Unfamiliarity with urban housing product, that's both from the market and the development side. There's beginning to get, be a stable of local developers that are more familiar with high-density mixed-use housing product, but that's been, you know, slow in coming, whereas other cities have developers that, like Dallas, for instance, that are much more experienced in understanding what it takes to build that type of product. And also from the market, there really aren't that many urban places to live in Oklahoma City yet. They're evolving in terms of Deep Deuce and some other areas, and we see that that's in significant demand. But from the metro-wide standpoint, most people are used to a lower-density type of living that wouldn't necessarily be considered true urban or downtown living. Limited urban amenities, one of the things to counter the perception that downtown is too expensive or unfamiliarity with downtown product is the ability to link amenities to downtown housing. So walkability to employment centers and retail and services, parks, schools, that kind of thing, that needs to come along in conjunction with the housing supply. It's just not a matter of units. It's why someone is living downtown and choosing a more expensive, smaller, attached product versus a single-family home or other type of unit available in the market. And of course, market uncertainty is a huge hurdle right now, the recession and the lingering effects. I think most, the general public doesn't realize that the recession actually ended two years ago officially, even because there's so, you know, such a significant lingering effect from that recession, especially the housing market. And we have yet to see, especially with all the troubles in Europe and all those things, that, where we're going in the future. To assist in understanding what the city can do to overcome these hurdles, we attempted to quantify a sample financial, you know, a sample development project. What we did is called a gap analysis. So we took a series of assumptions and assumed parcel of land, land cost, and created a performer, a developer's performer, both an operating performer and an investment performer. And the idea was to say, here are all the typical costs in downtown, here's what the market rents you could get, and here's, here are the gaps in financing. And what we found that, say in an investment model, that there are gaps as high as thirty to forty percent between costs and value. Or in an operating performer, which is, you know, cash flow basically, between cashing cash out. So that, it's a, just taking, you know, as a private developer and developing a piece of land, doing a reasonably high-density product with reasonable rental rates, buck thirty, dollar forty a square foot, there's still a significant gap. And that gap is what we try and, need to try to reduce in order to get a significant amount of downtown housing moving in Oklahoma City. There are a number of methods to solve the gap. We're going to discuss some financial methods from the city in a little bit, but there are also some methods that can be applied to some development thinking that we think that can reduce that gap. And I will say that this gap of thirty to forty percent is not necessarily located just in Oklahoma City. The need to provide structured parking, for instance, or other amenities to, just to create urban product, multifamily product on a particular site, a particular cost, that type of gap is actually fairly typical. We have a development partner on our team, Art Lomenick, who's done a significant amount of mixed-use development in the Dallas area, and he said that most transit-oriented developments in residential areas, especially in the suburbs, are seeing gaps at this moment about that same rate. So this is not an atypical situation, it's just a product of trying to develop, redevelop in previously developed areas, especially downtown areas. So ways developers could potentially work a product to solve this gap and reduce that, trying to meet in the middle here. One is applying appropriate parking ratios. A lot of, some developments here have applied two units per, two spaces per unit or slightly below. We find that the typical urban ratio is one-point-two to one-point-five spaces per unit. That reduces the need for so much structured or other types of parking that you need to build into a project. And even though there's a bit of a leap in logic in trying to get people who are used to ample parking into a product that has less parking, the idea is the inclusion of the walkability and access to employment and retail serves to counterbalance that. But not having to overpay for parking is a key factor in downtown development. So, and there are ways to create density without structured parking. Our partner, JHP, out of Dallas, an architecture/urban design firm, came up with a series of scenarios that show a density of twenty to thirty units an acre, which is a solid residential density, but using surface parking. And surface parking costs anywhere from one to two thousand dollars a space versus fifteen to twenty thousand dollars a space. So that's a significant cost savings in trying to solve that gap. The original analysis we did assumed structured parking, but if you can try to reduce parking of that size and still develop a solid urban, interesting, aesthetically pleasing product, there's some, a lot of opportunities to reduce gap. Compact development, matching construction costs to the market and smaller-scale units are all other ways to solve that gap, not assuming hot, upper-scale units, not assuming high-end, assuming a mid-to-low scale. A lot of demographics prefer downtown housing, don't need the granite countertops and the amenities within the unit. They almost, sometimes they prefer a more spare, bare loft-style kind of product that can be less expensive to build. So we find that, taking this model we created, we can reduce a gap down to maybe five to fifteen percent. That's the market gap. That's what we see as the gap between what people are typically used to paying and what they'd have to pay for this new product. So this creates an understanding that there's still a gap that will have to be solved on many projects in order to move projects forward in the future. So when we switch gears and talk about an implementation program, this implementation program that is recommended in this study works on a concept called the revitalization curve. The revitalization curve is based on a urban planning doctrine that says, successful urban planning is public-sector investment that's designed to elicit sustained and favorable private-sector investment. And the idea behind the revitalization curve is understanding where you are in terms of revitalization of a downtown, a neighborhood, a community, and understanding what public-sector funds have to be invested, and how much and how long in order to elicit a sustained private-sector reaction. Because the goal of any development scenario for a city should be that the private sector ultimately takes on the bulk of the financing and the role, but not all neighborhoods or cities are at that point. So that kind of guides the core concept of the implementation plan I'm going to discuss. There are a series of policies we feel that need to be enacted in order to create a successful implementation plan for downtown housing. The key is being proactive instead of reactive. There's an opportunity to engage with the development community, to work with them, to create projects. This has already been done on a number of projects, but we recommend being even more aggressive, not letting developers come to the city with an idea necessarily, but going out and really creating public-private partnerships that create a win-win situation both for the public and private sector. Development guidelines are important for this. It's important that public-sector investment not be used on just any project, that the ROI, so to speak, for the public sector is not always financial, but it's often includes social, community development, and economic development goals, and all those things should be tied to both development guidelines and incentive policies attached to any funds that the city uses to, in its partnerships, to create downtown housing. If these policies say, for example, a percentage of workforce or affordable housing in a project, urban design goals like setbacks and parking and things like that, if those are integrated into the expectations for our city investment upfront, that creates a more predictable environment for the development community, because they know when they come forward with projects, they, there's an understanding of what they can use public subsidies for. And infrastructure improvements, designing financial vehicles to specifically address infrastructure. TIF is out there already and can be used, is, one of its primary uses is for infrastructure, but there may be other opportunities to target just infrastructure improvements that may be the only hurdle for a development project. Suggested funding sources, it starts with TIF. TIF is kind of the big funding source out there for most urban redevelopment in Oklahoma City and everywhere else. There is money behind the TIF. TIF has, you know, funds have been dedicated to housing and commercial projects already through the existing TIF plan, but we really suggest that effort be put into, you know, financial vehicles far beyond tax increment financing. We've seen a development and public-private partnership environment over the last few years with financial capacity and resources shrink due to both difficulties in the recession impacting municipal budgets and other communities. Leaving TIF or tax increment financing is one of the only tools available, and we've seen that there've been a backlash against TIF from a lot of areas, not necessarily incorrectly considering the use of some TIF, but that really needs to be expanded beyond TIF, because TIF has a very specific purpose, has a certain timeline, and we recommend that different financial vehicles be established for the purpose of this implementation plan. Another one is the Special Redevelopment Fund. This is not yet, this needs to be developed over the future, but if there's a way to fund such a redevelopment fund that does not have the restrictions of TIF and can be used in different ways, that is an important kind of complementary use in addition to TIF. I'm sure you all are familiar with TIF, but it's used mostly for infrastructure like parking and utilities and things like that, but having the capacity to assist projects beyond that can be important, because that's not always the key hurdle to a development project. Loans are important, too, that not only in a financial vehicle that can be profitable to the city, but not all development projects need direct grants or cash infusion. Sometimes reduction of debt or more favorable financing is much more, is a much more feasible and useful tool for a development project to assist them with. So understanding soft and hard seconds, so to speak, to create more favorable financing, especially in an environment where banks are reticent to lend to a lot of different projects, especially considering the lending environment ten years ago, that can be an important asset. There's also the concept we floated of a loan pool or lending collateral. Some communities have put up a, basically an equity for collateral to banks to help them loan. So the banks have a loan pool that they will, that helps loosen up funds to finance projects, and a series of collateral, which essentially represents the equity behind that loan pool, can be kind of put away in escrow, and that gives the banks confidence that their loans will, are backed up, but also frees up financing for the purposes of private development. will, are backed up, but also frees up financing for the purposes of private development. And there's also a series of other tools which you're all familiar with, CDBG Home, 221D4 financial vehicles, that should be all used in the mix. We were asked to evaluate the TIF policy. One thing with the TIF policy is depending on the city's revised goals for housing development, whether it sees the need to invest more in downtown housing via the TIF, it could consider reallocating some of the TIF plan towards housing development. That's just an option, not necessarily a recommendation. Evaluation criteria. I just previously discussed this concept of adding in goals and objectives that the city comes up with, that are both community-based and government-based, that are, that are things that you all are looking for to get out of private development that the city helps finance. It's not just any old project, just because it's housing units that will be financed and has been financed in the past, that it has certain criteria, and those need to be built into the TIF policy so that it creates a predictable environment for developers. Those criteria need to be very specific. You don't want a situation where developers are complaining that the criteria were very loose over here, whereas they were used for another project. They need to be, you know, a checklist of very specific criteria that creates that predictable environment. There could be bonus criteria for projects that meet a significant amount of the criteria. You may not meet all of them, but if you meet a series of them, and the study recommends urban design, community development, economic development, and affordable housing goals, so if you can meet a whole series of them, that may generate opportunity for additional financing if necessary. And we also recommend removal of the statement that says you will favor for-sale housing in the TIF. For-sale housing is very difficult. The numbers for downtown Oklahoma City sort of suggest that it's not a ready environment for for-sale housing yet. Housing, people wanting for-sale product aren't necessarily ready to invest, especially a lot of money in that type of product, and for the foreseeable future, the rental market is going to dominate. So that all culminates in a public-private partnership that we recommend. This partnership would be city-led, proactive, and designed around the goal of creating one thousand housing units over the next eight years, assuming 2012 to 2020, on top of what is already being built. We feel that is a very easily achievable absorption goal, and on top of the, I think after the existing approved products are built, that would probably create about three thousand units in the downtown area, three thousand plus, feel that that should start to tip the scales towards that more sustained private investment that we're seeking and reduce the need for public-sector investment in downtown development. This investment would be targeted. It wouldn't necessarily be in anywhere in downtown. There's a certain need to focus development in certain areas so you can create places, placemaking, urban environments that sustain urban retail and dining, that are those amenities that people are looking for, and in locations that are walkable to major employment centers. Perhaps organizing incentives to leverage different types of development in different areas. Each of those study areas that we were asked to study have different demographics and markets that would prefer housing there, and involves various levels of density, and there may be opportunities to target different types of financial vehicles to address different types of hurdles in different geographic locations. And the key to all this is having a significant driver, a point organization that organizes and coordinates, that developers know is there, can approach, and that organization can coordinate this initiative by itself with coordination from the city, but it's a one-stop shop in terms of getting a development done, financed, approved, shepherded through a process. That's an important thing, especially for difficult redevelopment projects, is that a developer knows exactly where to go and what needs to be done, and isn't spread across a number of different city departments and trying to do what they need to do. So a point organization is really necessary to implement this type of public-private partnership. So we, a lot of this was written, actually, in May when we provided our draft report. So there's a ramp-up period, fall or early 2012, to get this going. There are a lot of next steps. There's a lot of understanding from the local level of what financing is possible, what the evaluation criterion goals should be, that need to be done beyond this plan, need to identify the point organization. And then the idea with that, this public-private partnership would be an eight-year, 2012 to 2020 initiative, hopefully maybe even beyond a thousand units, but it is a packaged and understood deal that serves to elicit a significant amount of downtown units over the next decade. So now welcome questions. Just want to make sure I recognize all my partners. I think I mentioned them throughout the process, but DCI was the lead, JHP out of Dallas, Texas, which has a significant amount of experience in multifamily housing and did a lot of housing in the uptown area of Dallas, was our design subconsultant. Janelle McCarty worked on the surveys and some of the market analysis for us. They're out of Indianapolis. And Art Lomenick out of Dallas, and that completes our team.
Yeah, I have, you know, there is a lot of focus here on incentives from the taxpayer for developments. But I'm not sure that this study takes into consideration the inertia, things that are already taking place. There are some things that we didn't talk about that I think are important. The Devon Tower and everything around it is going to open. The Millard Gardens is now complete. The taxpayer is going to invest, the mayor talked about maybe some being used for commuter rail, but certainly in excess of a hundred million dollars for transit downtown, that I think would affect some of these numbers that you talked about for parking. I think it would, is going to allure more people to live downtown. I'm not sure that all those things don't create, that we don't already have the inertia for private development. Right now, I'm not sure why you would do a private development and not ask the taxpayer for a million dollars to help with the bottom line. I'm afraid we're going to get into a situation where every development, even though it may, even though these are successful and they're very full, the rental units, but we're going to get in a situation where everybody just asks for the million dollars, and that, and we're not going to be able to determine when it would have happened on its own. I don't, I don't hear any discussion about schools, for example. As opposed to investing a million dollars for every rental development, what would happen if we invested in schools downtown? Larry Nichols was very generous and took us on a tour. We asked him about his eighteen hundred employees and then living downtown. He said it's all about schools. That's what his employees tell him. It's not the things that were mentioned here. It's having good schools downtown is what would push the eighteen hundred employees from Devon to live downtown. So you would, go ahead.
Yeah. Remind me if I've forgotten to address, because I think there are three questions in there. I'll work backwards in schools. One of the focuses we were asked to look at in this study was not a long-term vision of downtown housing, but how to get the expected and hoped downtown housing program that had been planned for in the past decade jump-started in the near term, so five years. For schools, a lot of the demographic that will choose to live downtown in the short term are not families. And while I am fully on board with the, your assertion that schools are essential to revitalizing urban areas, we do not necessarily see a significant linkage between the market opportunity in the short term and who would choose to select urban product, especially urban rental product, and those who demand, you know, schools. And that was borne out by the survey that we conducted that rated schools actually the lowest out of any amenity that people who wanted to move downtown would want. In the, in the long term, huge, huge issue that needs to be addressed, not only for downtown, but probably for most urban-core neighborhoods. But in the short term, that's why we didn't focus significantly on schools. The transit and other investments, we try to take into account a lot of that going on, not only like the Devon Tower, its impact on geographic areas of downtown where housing would want to be located, because that's obviously a significant employment driver, and what are the opportunities to tie into that. I absolutely agree that there's a level of inertia with a lot of other downtown projects that, you know, in this decade, hopefully, will create that sustained private investment in, not only in housing, but throughout other types of commercial and other types of development. But I don't see it there quite yet. The transit system is a little ways off. By the time it probably starts, and there's three or four years here where we can target investments in certain ways. And I think back to your first question, is that from our analysis of downtown housing projects, there were very few that have not received, you know, incentives of some sort from the city. So not, this, the implementation program that we recommended wasn't so much that, even though some developers have done all these things over here, that we need to invest a lot of money here, it was, well, this is what's been needed to be done in the past, and really try to identify the specific hurdles about why a lot of those projects have needed public-sector assistance. But repackage it and focus it in a way that says, all right, we recognize that there are some hurdles that the private sector doesn't necessarily have the ability by itself to get over, for whatever reasons, both in just the land or market conditions inherent to Oklahoma City where the national recession, what have you. But let's be as smart about this as possible. Let's leverage the somewhat limited funds available to the taxpayer and use it in a focused manner that elicits, that sustained private market reaction, and is not just whatever project comes along gets the assistance. So that's really where we tried to target this money is, I mean, the point organization will be responsible for evaluating projects, and that's done already in the city. Evaluation of performers, things like that, that's already part of the TIF policy. One of the criteria is that, you know, that the project has to stand on its own as much as possible before TIF is given. That's all intended to be carried over into this new policy. Then layer on criteria that the community and the city comes up with and say, you know, we're not going to invest in just any product. We want product that meets our goals for downtown environment. So if someone comes forward that doesn't meet any of those goals, there shouldn't be necessarily a reason why that investment should be put forth. So it's really taking what has been done a lot in the past and repackaging it in a proactive, focused manner so that you're not subsidizing downtown housing forever. Some communities take twenty or thirty years to do this. Moline, Illinois, a smaller community admittedly, just one I'm working at right now, has been revitalizing its downtown for thirty years and is still in a position where it needs to subsidize product. There's no reason why Oklahoma City should be in that situation ten years from now, but it, it does look like there needs to be another effort over the next decade to really get to that point where you're guiding and, you know, focusing the development you want in an effective manner rather than subsidizing.
Do you think that this concept that you emphasize in reference to public and private, when you look at the totality of this and you did your market analysis of Oklahoma City, did it strike you that there was a major difference in reference to the racial makeup and reference to the housing?
I don't recall. Well, there's some demographics in the survey related to that. I would say, does it strike me there's some differences based on my general experience with markets in the short and long term for downtown housing? I would say nothing, it didn't surprise me. Typically, minority populations are not representative of the first wave of users of downtown housing across the country.
On the flip side, because historically, that's where most of your minorities resided until there was a renaissance of urban renewal in most of these, most cities. Is that correct?
Yes. It's an interesting, you bring up an interesting kind of comment on the trends of urban revitalization and things like that over history. Unfortunately, you know, when a lot of investment left the urban cores of most American cities, that left certain populations with less means that were able to move, whether they were minority or not. But now the issue facing us is the first wave of people brought back into these areas are either, you know, younger people who are willing to pay a premium to live in certain areas, or people willing to pay a premium to be near certain amenities, and that creates the risk of gentrification that would preclude a successful mixed-income, mixed-cultural environment in an area that hopefully would be one of the most desirable places to live in the community, whether it's Oklahoma City or another community. Again, that's where some of these evaluation criteria come in, and some areas that we've been asked to look at there in the studies, such as workforce housing, affordable housing, creating opportunities where, to create what we'd call a mixed-income environment and not just market rate. Because market rate has a tendency to go higher end, whether in the short term or the long term, and achieve a level of gentrification that precludes people of certain income. We think downtown should be more of a mixed-income environment, and those goals may require some of this public-sector investment. So you might get to a situation where development projects are working on their own, but they're all high-end. That's very common. So you may choose to invest in projects that reduce the need, reduce the amount of market rate, maybe introduce some affordable workforce housing. That's something Chapel Hill, North Carolina, has started to do as it has seen its very over, you know, expensive and growing housing market price everyone out in the region, and they've gone vertical because they don't have any land left, so they actually have a trust that takes money from the federal government, other sources, and purchases condos or pays a certain amount of money into a multifamily product that gives them ownership or control over some units for a period of time that are affordable for their community development goals.
Yeah. Well, you know, because when I look at some of the benchmarks that you all, that you identified in reference to who are more likely to live downtown and who are more likely to come to downtown for different activities, it always tends to have this a hundred thousand dollar income. And if you are truly about the totality of a city, the whole of the city and the inclusion of everyone, then you would look at some type of project that would infuse the rest of the city into the urban setting. I think that a lot of times, that these studies and a lot of times these market analyses, they don't go and really talk to that other population who are being denied an opportunity to exist in that area, and the reasons why.
You bring up an excellent point, and that's one of the reasons this study attempted to go from market analysis to strategies. So the market analysis finding was that households with lower income or younger people are more likely to rent and move downtown, or typically older and higher-income people would be willing. And that leaves a huge gap, basically, you know, eighty percent, if not more, of the entire market. That's why the strategies linked into an implementation plan to address that are important because there are market hurdles to integrating those middle-income households that make up the majority of the market. And that, while it may have glossed over that to my detriment, was, it was really one of the key components of the reasoning behind this implementation plan, because there's a recognition that a lot of the market that you want to bring downtown, that may not work within a development performance now or in the future. So that may need a partnership to make that happen. It doesn't always, because the private market doesn't always respond to those opportunities the way you'd like it to, if only because certain costs that are beyond the control of everybody. So what, I think what you're stating, your goal is to make it a mixed income, mixed-use environment, is one of the goals of the implementation plan. It's understanding what the price points and the needs of that middle market, and who is interested in living downtown, what kind of product they would be interested in, and then what is needed to target development to create that. And those are, you know, next steps beyond the study.
Councilman, I think this, you know, as Ian was talking about, I mean, we, you know, he's advocating a proactive approach here as well, and we've been reactive so far. And so there's a sort of bifurcated approach here, where there's an approach to react to those proposals that we're getting, which are market-based. But then, it is a, it is a goal, it is an objective to have a mixed income community that's available, that provides housing for everybody who wants to be here, and to provide for workforce housing as well. So that would be a goal, that would be part of that proactive element.
Yes, Pat? Yes, I've got questions that aren't philosophical. I'm an engineer, so I'll go to the, on the funding sources that you talked about, are there any other communities that have used a revolving loan program successfully?
Yes, it's a fairly common financial tool.
Second question, in that same line, you talk about lending collateral. Has any community that you've worked with gone to a loan guarantee program?
Loan guarantees, yes. That's another fairly common approach. That can be kind of lumped in with, as an option with the other two.
In your study of our TIF program, did you recognize any obstacles to using TIF as you suggest that were maybe contrary to state law?
The way it's been used that's contrary to state law?
The way you suggested be, hopefully, the way it's been used, we comply with those.
No, I don't believe so. The TIF policy stands already has a series of evaluation criteria. What we've recommended is beefing those up and being more specific and linking that to more defined goals, as just discussed. That should not create a difficulty. And the use of TIF in terms of its specific needs and application are one of the reasons we recommend other sources, because, I mean, as a developer myself, I'm always trying to strain TIF to do what I need it to do, and it has its limitations. So having other tools in your tool belt are essential.
And the more strain you do, the more likely we'll have some intervention.
Absolutely. This is one of the difficulties with TIF as your only tool. You can only use it for certain things, and it has its limitations. So if that's your only tool, you know, you're limited in what you can do.
Thank you.
Pete, did you want to say something?
All right. Yeah, Ed?
Yeah, I want to pull it back into the philosophical and theoretical. But just, I just want to go back to transit, because the whole premise of that $100 million plus dollar investment, or one of the major premises is that you're going to attract private investment to it. Portland, you know, estimates are for every $1 of public money that you spend, you get $12, $15, $16 of private investment. Almost all of that is housing. You get housing around each transit stop. So if the city, so the city basically is making a $110, $120 million investment, one of the primary goals of which is to pull housing around it as an incentive. So, I mean, that's not mentioned in any of these calculations. Your goal is to get this push and get 1,000 units by 2020. By 2020, we should have some, a downtown streetcar fully operational. For the first time, Oklahoma City will offer its citizens the possibility of not having an automobile, or living the majority of their life without an automobile. Some of the people that Skip is referencing, lower-income families, lower-middle income, spending 25, 30, 35% of their family budget on transportation. But with a streetcar, you have the potential to radically change that. So that's an incentive for people to come and live near transit stops. So I need, I just want to return to that and get your thoughts on that.
Absolutely. Very excellent question. The investment around transit stations has to be taken with a bit of a grain of salt in that, in terms of what you expect to get. Portland, Oregon, for example, it's huge, you know, success in the Pearl District and other areas. But I would argue that Portland, downtown Portland, was much more ready for urban housing than downtown Oklahoma City is. So there are a number of different things to address here. One is the transit route, which, when we completed the draft report, was still in flux. There, if you're talking about housing in, let's take the Broadway corridor, for example, if that's a part of the line, because I think that was always part of most of the lines in the studies. You could absolutely expect private investment to occur because that transit line is going there, and not have to use any public investment for it. However, you could also see such a run-up on land value that no one can afford to buy the land because of speculation, and the market turns against you once again despite that added amenity. So those are certainly variables that need to be taken into consideration when the transit line is finalized and then implemented. We discussed the unfamiliarity with urban housing product. There's also an unfamiliarity with public transit within Oklahoma City, and whether that streetcar will necessarily appeal to every single person wanting to live downtown. We did a downtown employer survey as well, and there's a large interest in employees working in near downtown employers, like Dell and the hospitals and Tinker Air Force Base. You still need a car to get there, but they'd prefer to live downtown. So the streetcar doesn't necessarily appeal to that. The streetcar could also serve to, you know, transit tends to, if you have a rail line, the values go like this, depending on the distance from it. So you could see gentrification and high cost next to the transit line, and when you want to try to integrate a mixed income environment, you have to understand what the possibilities are further away from that line. So, for instance, say by 2020 or the late teens, you can have this transit line and see a significant amount of investment, and that's great, but there may be other areas of downtown that still need focus. Downtown, as was defined by us, is a really large area, and it's going to take a long time to build out with housing or other types of development. There's also Core to Shore, which is another major redevelopment initiative that takes, it's going to take a lot of money and a lot of time. You could refocus your effort down there, as that's what I assume is stated as a significant redevelopment goal of the city. So there's lots of flexibility within this to take into account these different variables, not only in case the transit line doesn't deliver the expected investment right away. I think long-term, it will. But there's also the flexibility to say, all right, this is working over here, let's focus in over here. And maybe you don't. Maybe you've done your job in four or five years. That's great. You've reduced the window to get to sustained investment. That's a victory in of itself. But, you know, until the transit line gets started and people start, feel comfortable using it, and you desire a mixed income environment with various different types of households, as opposed to just young or old or high income, I think there's a need to kind of have this type of program under city control so that you can guide downtown revitalization.
Any other comments or questions on the housing study? We appreciate your work very much and your patience with our scheduling.
Thank you very much.
Anything else under city manager reports?
No, sir.
All right. Francis, anyone signed under Citizens to Be Heard? Is there anyone here wishing to speak under Citizens to Be Heard? No one has signed up. All right, we have, yeah, Art? Sure, come on up.
I'm Art Cotton. I'm with the Oklahoma City Boathouse Foundation. Thank you, Mayor, and council members for your approval for our Kaboom Playground on Saturday. And I just wanted to invite any of you that would like to, to come down and help us build that. It's a great opportunity to help us get younger Oklahomacitians fit. Wanted to have you on that opportunity, and we're going to have a big announcement, probably in about a week or so, on a youth pavilion that will drive more people down to the river and help us get a little bit more fit too. But wanted to at least let you know that, and thank you for your affirmative action.
Well, thanks for your involvement. But we have executive session, we'll return.